Would everyone please stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hutchings?
Here.
Ruffridge?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Carey?
Present.
Chilton?
Present.
Parker?
Vice Mayor Parker is, has an excused absence for this meeting.
Student Representative Knowles?
And she will not be in attendance this evening.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of Agenda and Consent Agenda, and I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Ms. Hutchings?
I would like to recuse myself from the Planning and Zoning Action Memorandum 2022-006 because of a conflict.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings, and that would be a conflict. Will the Clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
Approval of minutes, February 23rd, 2022, council meeting minutes. New business ordinances for introduction, ordinance 2022-006, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $3,064.29 in the COVID-19 Relief Special Revenue Fund for additional grant funds received from the State of Alaska Department of Commerce, Community, and Economic Development as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, of 2021, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on March 23rd, 2022. New business other, action memorandum 2022-006, confirming the recommended candidates for appointment to the Kenai Peninsula Borough Planning Commission, Soldatna City Seat. Recommended candidates include Linda Hutchings and Charlene Toutfest, introduced by the mayor. Action memorandum 2022-007, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Appointment of Dennis Murray for Seat G, term ending December 31st, 2023, introduced by the mayor, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the Clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm looking for raised hands under Zoom, and I see no raised hands under Zoom. Hearing no one wishing to speak, the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing none, we'll consider the Agenda and Consent Agenda passed by unanimous consent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda will be item number four, presentations with prior notice. And that would be ACS Wireless Mesh Project. Heather Kavanaugh, Alaska Communications System, Director of External Affairs and Corporate Communications, will be making the presentation. And I believe there may be others participating, Greg Tuck, Gail Dotty, and Bobby Stone. So you're on, Ms. Kavanaugh.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you to all of the city council members for having us here tonight. We really appreciate your time and this opportunity. As Mayor Whitney said, my name is Heather Kavanaugh, and I serve as Director of External Affairs and Corporate Communication at ACS. We are a statewide broadband company serving Soldatna and have employees in the Soldatna area. And today, we want to talk to you about our plans to expand broadband in Soldatna. So I am going to share my screen, and while I do that, I also want to let you know that I have colleagues here with me who are also happy to answer questions. There are technical expertise in different areas, so... Should be sharing my screen here in just a minute. And I am happy, we're happy to take questions as we go through the presentation, so please feel free to stop me and ask questions. So our agenda today is we want to start with our purpose, why expand internet, what the goal is, the technology we plan to use, where we would be providing service, a timeline, next steps, and then we can answer any additional questions you have at the end and get your feedback. So of course, I think we all know that high-speed internet is critical for supporting business and government with the technology that's needed to deliver healthcare, education, support economic development, and really support quality of life and safety as well. So our goal at Alaska Communications is to provide high-speed internet. And throughout high-density areas here that you see here up to gigabit speeds, and Soldatna is of course on the list of one of the communities that we want to serve. Just so that you're aware, we're also serving rural communities and expanding internet, but we're using a different technology for that. So today, we're focused on Soldatna and the technology we'll be using in Soldatna. So the technology is a fiber-based fixed wireless mesh network. And the mesh network would use equipment that you see here. So on the right-hand side is equipment that we would place. We'd like to use light poles that the city of Soldatna owns rather than setting up our own poles. And then on the left-hand side, you can see is a piece of equipment that would go on a house, and it's about the size of an iPhone but a little bit thicker. So this is the equipment that we would use. It's relatively small, and it can be mounted to existing light poles that are already in Soldatna. So I'm going to show you a little bit more in detail where we're planning to do this. So this is just an aerial view, and this is an illustration. This is not in Soldatna, but it's an illustration of how a network like this works. So fiber goes to the poles, and the equipment is then mounted on the pole, and it transmits a signal to the next pole or to the equipment that's mounted on a home. And so we can show you exactly where in Soldatna we would like to, which neighborhoods we would like to deploy this technology. So this is a map of Soldatna, and the red squares that you see are actual addresses that we could reach. And then on the next slide, these are the city of Soldatna light poles that we would potentially like to mount the equipment on. So in terms of timing, we've completed a very successful trial in Anchorage that was done, that was started in 2022, or sorry, 2020. And we would actually like to start this Soldatna deployment as soon as we can and get that completed in 2022. And so what we are looking for from the city council is just your support in moving forward with a project like this and mounting antennas on light poles. And what we would do as a next step is work with the city manager on the details of a agreement. We fully expect to pay the city for use and access to the light poles. We want this to be a win-win for the city and its residents and businesses, and then of course, work for Alaska Communications as well. So that is, in a nutshell, a high-level overview of what we're looking to do. And again, the next steps would be to get, to answer your questions, get your feedback, and then get approval to work with the city manager on an agreement. And so with that, I would love to open it up for your questions. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
All right, Ms. Kavanaugh, thank you. I've got a few questions here, just maybe some clarification. So you're proposing the, these to go on light poles as well as the home equipment that we saw. So you mentioned fiber to those poles, and I apologize, I'm sitting a little far away. I know I didn't see exactly where maybe those poles were if they were in your presentation, but would this require ACS then to trench fiber and to essentially dig up some ground to be able to do this, or is this fiber you already have existing in the ground?
That's a great question. Thanks for asking. Greg Tuck is with us today. He is our Senior Manager of Engineering, and I'll ask Greg if he could answer that question.
Yeah, hi. We would be starting with areas that have existing fiber. And then we're able to, within this technology, the mesh concept, the radios, the back hall, the main DMs, or the radios that were on the right on that other slide that Heather had shown, they're able to create back hall, and that's how we're able to kind of mesh this, this network out. So it is not, it's not necessarily going to be fiber at every pole that we would need one of these radios, these DMs, the distribution nodes. There would only be, we would space those out, so there wouldn't be a need to, to do as much trenching. There might be some, but the initial would be coming off of poles that are right at, are right at, near the base of where our fiber is located.
Follow-up. And I know that ACS has built towers, so especially thinking about out in the Sterling area, I think quite a few of those are ACS towers providing wireless. Could you explain how this technology, is this different than that? Is it the same? I guess I'm asking the question is why would you not put towers or use existing towers? Could you expand on that a little bit, please?
Sure. First of all, it is different. The, this technology here with the mesh is up to gigabit speeds. So a lot faster than the, the point-to-multi-point equipment that is on our towers that you've seen around your, around the Kenai Peninsula Borough area. Those are up to 50 meg of service, and those are currently specifically to help cover the CAF area that we're help with the federal-funded CAF program. So the, the requirements for that program is far less as far as bandwidth goes. So that's why we chose to go up to 50 meg in those areas. There's also different frequency, that frequency that is used on the majority of our towers is a 365 CBRS frequency, and this would more of 60 gigahertz speed, so it's a very pencil beam that is specifically between the two radios at short distances. The other stuff that you see at our towers reach miles to be able to provide services to customers, where this is more of, it creates its coverage by meshing the radios together and as well as providing the higher, the higher speeds over the 60 gigahertz frequency.
Thank you. And one last question, I'll stop monopolizing time here, so, and this might be back to Ms. Kavanaugh. So obviously, you know, if an agreement were to be, be reached, there would be some lease payments and things, and that would be worked out. But, you know, talking about benefiting the community, I mean, we've seen obviously through COVID and some of these things that broadband access is a, there's a tremendous gap, you know, especially for when we talk about lower-income folks and being able to access whether that's telehealth or education or those types of things. Is there any benefit that you would be proposing to the community of Soldatna as a whole besides just those lease payments?
Oh, well, the benefit would really be in the internet service that residents and businesses would have access to. As we had mentioned, it would be gigabit speed, so it's just reaching out to neighborhoods that may have slower speeds today and getting them to a place where they can do exactly what we're doing now, where you can do live video conferencing and online school and telemedicine, which is, is taking off and really transforming communities where you can access your doctor from home, especially when you're a patient who just has to do regular check-ins instead of having to sometimes go in to see specialists that might be either in Anchorage or Seattle or somewhere else. And so it really brings significant impacts to communities, and there are, there's a lot of data that suggests economic growth is tied directly to access to broadband.
Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. Are there any negative effects that this will have on any other service providers, service?
There are none that we are aware of, and it is definitely not our intent to have any negative impact on other service providers. We're the primary provider in Soldatna, and this is really meant to improve our network and get customers that we have in Soldatna better service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hutchings?
So my question is, what is the approximate time that this will be implemented and what will be the cost to a homeowner?
So Greg, do you want to start and just sort of talk about the timeline to get this project up and running?
I'm, sure. I couldn't hear the exact question. There was a beep in the middle. I apologize. But to get it up and running, we were looking to definitely start deployment as soon as possible as the agreements come into play and get approved. There is still some workaround, you know, finalizing the approved configuration on the poles, which is Bobby Stone is, is on the call as well, if there's any questions on details about that. But we are looking to start as soon as approvals and configurations are agreed to.
And to continue with that, what do you expect the cost to be?
So just in case Greg didn't hear that question, and to make sure I heard it correctly, your question is what do you expect the cost to be? And are you asking what the cost for ACS to deploy the technology is, or are you asking what the cost to the city would be?
What the cost to a homeowner would be to...
Oh, thank you for the service.
Yes.
Yes, thank you for clarifying. So our plan is to offer rates that are comparable, that would be the same as in Anchorage. What's interesting is we, so our rates start at $89.99 a month for unlimited data, so you would never have a data cap. You can stream, you can do online video conferencing like we're doing now as much as you want. You would never have your speed slowed down or throttled, and we think that's a really big benefit to consumers. And as we start to bring faster speeds to communities, we may be having to charge higher rates for more speed. Gigabit service is new to Alaska Communications, and so you may see an option for a higher price to get faster speed, but our base rate started $89.99 a month.
And one follow-up, how much federal funding are you getting to help implement this system?
That is a great question. We are not getting any federal funding for this particular project. So we do get federal funding to expand service to underserved communities. And so Sterling is a great example of that, where Sterling was considered to be just outside of Soldatna enough, and we were able to qualify for federal funding to deploy internet service in that area. And Greg had talked about that previously, where it's a different technology. The maximum speed there is 50 megabits, which is great. It's actually a really good speed, but it's not the gigabit speed that we would be able to do in Soldatna. So this project is not federally funded, while other projects that we're doing are. Great question.
Mr. Chilton?
Thank you. My question would be for the existing customers of legacy ACS DSL here in Soldatna City Limits. Do you have any plans to do any public outreach to them and proactively convert them over to this new service once it's established within the community? And then the follow-up to that would be, do you intend to decommission the legacy DSL network within the city as this becomes online?
So typically, great, great questions again. Thank you. And absolutely, we will be doing outreach to the community as we start rolling this out, so people know that it's coming. And then again, once the service is actually available. And then your other question is about decommissioning the network. Typically, what happens, and I'll let Greg expand on this, but typically what happens is we have copper in the ground, and that copper just stays there. But you're right, we wouldn't be upgrading that network anymore. That technology is really considered, I would say, kind of becoming outdated. And what we're doing here is bringing the latest and greatest technology to Soldatna.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
And just a follow-up, please. You mentioned that the cost to a homeowner might be $89 for the speeds, and gigabit speeds might be more. Two things, could you tell me what the speed would be that a homeowner would get at $89? And if I wanted to buy gigabit speed from you, do you know what that price would be?
Yeah, that's a great question. So right now, I believe our $89.99 a month speed is up to 50 mags. Whatever the fastest is we can get you, we will give that to you. And so for the gigabit speed, again, I don't think that we have those prices finalized yet because again, this is a new technology for us. It's a new service. And so that is something I'm happy to follow up with the city council on. If, if this is approved and we do get to start moving forward, we can also come in and give you updates. I will share with you that we believe we have to be competitively priced. And so we will be offering speeds that are, that are not extremely high, knowing that we have to offer a good service and fast speeds in order to have customers.
Any other questions? Mr. Ruffridge, did you have any?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question in regards to the equipment that's needed on the receiving end, and most specifically regarding whether or not, if these are using city infrastructure in order to produce a Wi-Fi mesh signal, is it, is it possible that people could access that on a subsidized basis or, you know, within city limits on a free basis? I think cost, and I think we've been asking this question a number of times already in this session, cost is actually sometimes the barrier, or a lot of times the barrier, not necessarily just access to service. So just wanting to clarify a couple of those things, if there's equipment needed and if there's a possibility to subsidize or offer it for free, if not.
Yeah, that's a really good question, and you're right. Cost is a barrier for some people who don't have internet today and can't afford it. And there is the Federal Affordable Connectivity Program that offers a $75 per month subsidy, and that's a relatively new program, and we are advertising that or participating as a provider, and we do advertise it to customers. And anybody in Alaska is eligible for that $75 subsidy for internet service.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you. Yeah, just a follow-up on the equipment that's needed. So is there, is there a similar sort of modem or something on the receiving end that's needed to get that signal? Or is it, can I just walk out with my iPhone and stand underneath a light tower and have Wi-Fi?
Yeah, great question. And yes, you do need a specialized piece of equipment that we would install on your home, and so you can see the picture of it here. And I believe that we typically cover the cost of that equipment. Greg, I don't know if you know anything other that would be different with this program?
Yeah, it's, it's, we do cover it, and there, the small antenna on the left of the screen that's, like Heather mentioned, it's just a smidge bigger than a, thicker than an iPhone, that would go on the, the outside of the residence, and it would be cable and grounded, and the cabling would come inside to a SmartRG router, which we would also provide. And then you would have Wi-Fi, or you could plug a hard line directly into that router, just as most other routers work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I'm sure you are in contact with, or will be shortly in contact with the city manager to finalize something on this, and we look forward to seeing some new services here in, in Soldatna.
Excellent. Well, thank you again for having us. We really appreciate the opportunity, and we are excited to hopefully move this forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda will be public comments and presentations. For items other than those appearing on the agenda, there's three minutes per speaker and 20 minutes aggregate. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to comment on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move over to Zoom, and I see no hands raised in Zoom. So we will move on to item six on the agenda, Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. I see no borough representative or legislators here in the council chambers, and I see no hands raised on Zoom. So we'll move on to item number seven on the agenda, and that is Public Hearings. Ordinance, first one is ordinance 2022-004, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $85,000 in the general fund for additional snow removal services introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption of ordinance 2022-004.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hutchings, thank you. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. As I reported, I believe at one of the previous meetings, we had been tracking and keeping an eye on our snow removal budget, and we had reported out that we had surpassed that budget amount several weeks ago. When we put this item in the packet a few weeks ago, we included a memo from our streets and maintenance manager, Mr. Sundberg, who's on the phone with us if there are any specific questions. But he looked at where we were at in terms of the trucks to haul the snow, the pit fees to store the snow, and projected that we would need an additional $85,000 for the remainder of this snow season. At the time, we had spent approximately $30,000 beyond that $100,000. As of today, it's somewhere closer to $50,000 or $60,000 beyond, which is not something we normally do. We don't normally spend beyond what's been previously appropriated by the council, but felt that by communicating the situation to you and getting the support to continue hauling and dealing with the snow as it arrived was the most important priority for us. I will say that it's, it's a heavy snow year. I included a small graph showing kind of where we are compared to some averages and some, some low years, just to show the volatility in the snow events from year to year and how that has a really direct impact in terms of our budget. We've been getting more calls about the condition of the roads, the condition of parking lots, the condition of the airport, and our team continues to be out there working on addressing that situation. Currently, right now, it's very challenging with the ice and the rutting and then the water and the drainage. But I will say it's not for a lack of effort. Mr. Sundberg gives me regular updates daily. He's got a punch list, and he'll take the team and go address problem areas if there's a direct concern. If someone calls us and there's an area that they think particularly needs to be addressed right away. So they're continuing to work. I mentioned prior that we will take a look at our overall budgeting, and we are taking a look at our priorities and our approach. And we do intend to bring back recommendations after we do that analysis moving forward to best position us with our limited resources in years where, like this year, we have subsequent numerous close-together snow events. However, that work will be something that we consider moving into next winter. This budget request is really about dealing with the current year and getting through the remainder of, of March and April, ensuring that we continue having sufficient budget to, to remove the snow as we're able to break up the ice and haul it away. Happy to answer. Any questions? As well as I said, Mr. Sundberg's with us tonight. If the council has specific questions, it would be more appropriately directed to him. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. A public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I see no hands raised on Zoom. So the, the item is back before the council. Any comments from the council? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the memo that we have dated February 16th, it says that it's hoped that this will carry us through the year in terms of the amount of fund- it says that it's hoped that this will carry us through the year in terms of the amount of funds we need. Madam Manager, do you anticipate that you will need more funds?
Thank you, Councilmember Carey, for the question. Checking in earlier this week with Mr. Sundberg, we felt that that estimate was still sufficient to get us through the year. And the one additional resource we have is the city's contingency fund. So should we need to, and that's actually a normal historical use of those contingency funds is for snow removal. In this case, we felt that we needed to request a specific appropriation. However, should this number not turn out to be right on target, we have our normal ability to utilize a small portion of those funds and would report back to the council if that was the case.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Mr. Chilson?
So this year, have we not touched that contingency fund so far? Has the load been such that we just decided that we need an appropriation above and beyond that and just skipped it and went right to the additional appropriation?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson. I will confirm with Melanie and back in my notes, but yes, I believe that's correct. So when I was updated by Melanie and Scotty that we were in the situation we were, we knew that that twenty thousand dollars, which is the authorization that I have to be able to move money between accounts in the same fund, would likely be insufficient. So rather than using any contingency funding, instead, we prepared this ordinance as a standalone request. So we have not used contingency at this point for snow removal in this current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Ruffridge, do you have any?
No, sir. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Looking at the latest weather report, it kind of looks like we may be tapping back into this again here before too long. It just doesn't want to quit. So having no one who wished to speak on the item, the item is back, oh, call for the vote.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Ordinance 2022-004 passed on a five-zero vote. Moving on to the next item is Ordinance 2022-005, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $60,000 in the General Fund for Additional Legal Services introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact?
I would move that way.
Ms. Hutchings?
I make a motion to enact Ordinance 2022-005, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $60,000 in the General Fund for Additional Legal Services.
May I have a second, please?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. It's not often that we like to ask for more money back-to-back. In this case, these two ordinances landed side by side for completely unrelated reasons. So through our annual operating budget, we appropriate seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars for legal services. And as you know, we have a contract with a legal firm that utilize their attorneys in their office to provide a variety of general legal services. We're right in line of spending annually with where we're at in the year, except for two additional tasks and projects that we've assigned to their office. The first was the appeal of the city's annexation petition. So to date, the attorneys have expended approximately twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars on that effort. Additionally, the UCDA amicus brief, which was drafted and submitted through January, had incurred almost fourteen thousand dollars. So those two items alone have utilized a larger portion of our budget, and we would not be able to make up that difference by scaling back or cutting kind of our needs to the remainder of the year. So for the remainder of FY '22, we're requesting additional funds be appropriated to the legal services budget, really to continue our normal procedures of reaching out to the attorneys as needed for administrative needs or legislative needs, but also for those two items through the remainder of the fiscal year. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. A public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber that would like to comment on Ordinance 2022-005? Seeing none, taking a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised. Hearing no one wishing to speak on this item, it is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Ruffridge, do you have any?
No, sir. Thank you.
Seeing no comments, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-005 passes on a five-zero vote. Moving on to the next agenda item, number eight, new business. First item will be Resolution 2022-007, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Sole Source Professional Service Contract with HDR Engineering, Inc. for Water and Wastewater Rate Studies in the Amount of $43,731 introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt? Ms. Hutchings?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-007, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Sole Source Professional Services Contract with HDR Engineering, Inc. for Water and Wastewater Rate Studies in the Amount of $43,731.
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. The council has seen several different pieces of legislation related to this topic, both authorizing us to apply for the grants for the two rate studies with the water and sewer components, as well as to appropriate those funds. We have received the grant agreement paperwork, and this resolution would authorize us to enter into a contract with HDR as the firm that has provided a proposal to move forward with that work. HDR is very familiar with our system. They have analyzed the technical aspects of our system. They provided a previous rate study to the city. And we felt that those qualifications and that knowledge and potential cost savings justified bringing forward this request to seek authorization to execute a contract directly with them. Our utility manager, Mike Allen, is on the line with us, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or defer to him as appropriate. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers who would like to speak on Ordinance, excuse me, Resolution 2022-007? Seeing none, I'm looking at the Zoom, and I see no hands raised. Having no one who wishes to speak on the, speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Ruffridge?
No, sir.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-007 passes on a five-zero vote. Second item is Resolution 2022-008, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Lease Agreement with Guest Solatna Limited Liability Corporation for the Development of a Doughtown Public Parking Lot introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt? Mr. Chilson?
I would move to adopt Resolution 2022-008.
Thank you. May I have a second? Ms. Hutchings, thank you. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This resolution would authorize the administration, me, to execute a lease agreement with the owners of the Aspen Hotel. We've talked a lot about downtown parking as it relates to large events and working to minimize the impact on adjacent businesses when there are large events that we host or sponsor or that some of the organizations in town sponsor. And we approached the folks who own the Aspen Hotel probably a couple of years ago now. Mr. Zarneski, our Director of Economic Development and Planning, had reached out and begun having conversations about the possibility of us formalizing what has been a generous agreement on their part to allow people to park there during events. The agreement that's in front of you would allow the city to construct paved parking with drainage and landscaping, et cetera, and enter into a twenty-year lease. We would be leasing the parcel for a dollar a year. We would be reimbursing the cost of property taxes. It would still be taxable even if the city was the entity leasing it long-term. But overall, that is the terms of the agreement, a twenty-year lease for those costs, to be able to use for public parking, small events like markets, et cetera. There is a clause in the lease agreement that if it was terminated prior to the end of the twenty years, the city would reimburse, we would be reimbursed a prorated portion of the cost of our improvements. So that is intended to protect the city if, for whatever reason, the owners of that parcel decide that it's no longer feasible for them to continue providing that. They would have an out, but a portion of our investment would be protected, depending on how long the city had been able to utilize that parcel. We are, I'll say, John's also kind of been working with Arby's as well, the adjacent parcel owner on drainage and landscaping and access. But this represents many months of work and back and forth to bring forward something that we feel is a win for, hopefully, the landowners, the city, and the community in general. John's here with us tonight, can answer any questions if you have any. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber who would like to speak on Resolution 2022-008? Seeing none, we'll move on to Zoom participants, and I see no hands raised. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to voice my strong support for this. This will help certainly those immediate commercial interests, but also the whole city in terms of, we need better places for people to park, and this will greatly help others in that peripheral area that may find that sometimes people use their area to park. Again, this will take care of that. And so again, I think it shows a proactiveness on the part of the city. And again, I greatly appreciate that the Aspen was willing to work with us. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
And two questions for administration, just so, and just start for clarification for the record. When we talk about the property taxes that the city will cover, that is just that parking lot. It does not include the hotel's property. Am I correct on that, John? So I'm seeing yes.
Councilmember Nelson, yes, that is correct. It would be just the, it's actually two separate parcels. So it would just be the portion on the parcel that we're using as a public parking lot.
Thank you. And then just a follow-up, and maybe I missed it in the packet, apologies. So for winter maintenance and things, is that going to be the city's responsibility? Would that be our maintenance department, or is that the Aspen that'll be plowing and keeping that safe?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. The city would take on maintenance responsibilities year-round. That would include the landscaping as well as winter maintenance. I will say, however, we have the opportunity to decide when to open up a parking lot like that in the winter. And so, for example, the parking lot at Solatna Creek Park, the lower lot, sometimes we'll just go in and maintain it ahead of one of those large events where we know there's going to be a lot of need for that. So we would work with the landowners. We'd work with Scotty to determine what that maintenance protocol would look like moving forward. But it would be something that we would incorporate into our process.
And I assume just based on that that you don't foresee a large additional expense in the budget for this lot? Is that a correct assumption?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. That'd be correct. Currently, we maintain parking lots such as Solatna Creek Park, Farnsworth Park, the Sports Center. So adding one additional lot into the parking lots we're currently maintaining had not warrant, caused us to warrant a request for additional funding for that expense.
Mr. Chilson?
I'd just like to say thank you to the administration and our planning department for bringing this forward and making the engagement with the community there happen to make this a reality. I mean, there's definitely been a fairly strong need. I think parking has been one of the reasons that we've seen kind of capped the ability to grow events there. I guess my question would be if we're going to start leveraging more parking space up near the highway, it's going to cause people to kind of walk back by the hotel and kind of through their adjacent parking lot by the existing gravel lot down there, and there's kind of a really steep slope between the two? Is there any talk about maybe putting some stairs or cleaning up the pathing between where the Aspen is now and their current lot to the side and that gravel lot we have down below the park? So people aren't walking over and kind of scrambling down a gravel cliff to get to the park?
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There has not been any specific plans laid for making that type of connection. We've talked about that type of connection historically. And I think that what we'll do is we'll keep an eye and see how this lot is being used, especially for the large events, and make a determination at that point to, you know, whether to make that type of connection. At this point, our belief is that most of the folks who are going to park there are going to access Solatna Creek Park from the Sterling Highway. I just don't know that there's that many folks that realize they could scoot around the backside behind Napa between there to head over to the park.
I'm just looking at kind of the aerial photo here of the parking lot layout. So that side parking lot behind the Aspen looks like a much more appealing place to park. I mean, you're right there and you can just walk down. So is there going to be any kind of coordination with the Aspen to ensure that our park users aren't taking away parking spaces away from the hotel and going over there? And, you know, this is clearly for the city and city events, and this lot over here is for Aspen only. Or is the Aspen supportive of letting us use both of their parking spaces, the one they already had plus the one that they're leasing to us?
Thank you again, Mr. Chilson. One of the things that we have talked about is the need to sign the lots. And it is going to be the responsibility of each party to ensure that the lot is used appropriately. And Aspen wants to keep their lot for their customers and allow for the public parking to be on the lot adjacent to the Sterling. So there will be some signage that will be placed that will help hopefully take care of that situation if there are those kinds of events or those kinds of situations. And certainly, as the landowner, if there are immediate problems, they certainly have the ability to remove vehicles if they are blocking access, for example.
Last question. Do we know how many cars this lot would potentially support?
Yes. Right now, it's planned for seventy cars. So that's maximizing, based on the dimensions of this lot, we tried to come up with a parking scenario that would maximize that, but still allow this center landscape island within the center of it to provide some green space and also the opportunity to hold events like a farmer's market or any other type of small event that would occur there. But this design, I want to note, is really compatible with what the Aspen owner was interested in. And we worked back and forth with him to come to this design. He bought this lot specifically to keep open, to allow visibility for his hotel. And it's always been his long-term plan to ensure that he'd have visibility, but also he wanted to, you know, create a more attractive landscape. So the timing worked out super. He's been a wonderful partner, and we're looking forward to it.
And the consideration of landscape impacts and green space is something I greatly appreciate. It's been prioritized through this process and that we're not just moving in there and just doing a full parking lot with just pavement. So thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Ruffridge?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Thank you. I guess I just wanted to find out on that green space and that plan, it looks so nice, John. As always, appreciate the work that you put into that. And what, is that part of our capital improvement plan? Because I'm not remembering that exactly, and I'm assuming there's going to be a cost associated with that a little bit. And are we planning on doing that this summer?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Ruffridge. Yes, it is part of our capital budget. So last year, you approved substitute ordinance 2021-015, $250,000 for the construction of this parking lot. So that money has been appropriated. And your second question, I'm sorry. Oh, this, the timing. Yes. Both the city and the owner of the Aspen are very interested in getting this project started this summer and completing it. We do realize because of some of the supply chain issues, that there may be some issues, and the owner has allowed for, in the lease, to extend the actual construction time through July of 2023. In the event, we do have some of those supply chain issues. but it's our expectation that this, uh, be constructed this summer.
Great news. Thank you, John.
Any other questions or comments? I do have one. Looking at the, uh, diagrams of the landscaping, uh, I think it looks absolutely great. And I really appreciate the fact that we are doing some, um, beautifying to that area. Instead of just having a vacant lot, there was, uh, asphalt. Uh, at least we'll have a, a, a nice-looking site, a nice-looking parking lot. It may be almost like another little park.
Exactly.
Thank you for your hard work on that. Seeing no other, uh, comments, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight passes on a five-zero vote. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is, uh, mayor and council reports. And I will keep it brief. Very brief. I have no comments. We'll move on to the next item. Soldatna Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Mr. Chilson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine will likewise be very brief. With our most recent Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we had a single item on the agenda, and that was P and Z Resolution twenty twenty-two zero zero four, recommending a business center subdivision replant. Essentially, what this is doing is there's two existing plots over off the, um, the city side of Knight Drive. Um, one where there's a small, uh, re, um, office-based building and a much larger vacant lot to the side of that, um, where there is, um, an, on emerging development to build a large medical office there. And both lots are currently owned by the same owner, and he's looking to combine them to a single lot to expand parking options with that development. All of these met the, uh, current standards for the commercial zoning district where the, these properties reside, and it was the unanimous recommendation of the commission to, uh, support this replant, and they did pass that resolution. So that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Moving on to item number ten, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Um, I had a lunch meeting on Monday with Shannon Davis, the director, uh, executive director of the Soldatna Chamber. Uh, we were discussing the upcoming end of the current three-year term for the lease agreement between, uh, the city and the chamber to both, uh, market on behalf of the municipality, but also, um, operate the visitor center. So that agreement, uh, expires at the end of this fiscal year, and this was just an initial meeting to get together to talk about revisiting that and coming back with something that's updated that we can propose to the council. Uh, I want to make a quick note about our fleet. We've got several vehicles that the council approved, uh, the purchase of in the current fiscal year. And, uh, Scotty, uh, maintains the ordering, and, and as we've mentioned, with supply chain issues, vehicles are something that have been difficult for us to, to move forward and, and secure. The sourcing on that's been difficult. But, um, I did want to note that we have, one of our, uh, SPD cruisers is now out of commission after a minor accident. So we will be getting some insurance money back. We had, uh, the council had approved the purchase of a new, uh, police cruiser for FY twenty-three. What we might be doing is coming back a little sooner than that with a plan to request, uh, an additional, uh, vehicle. And we work through our normal procure, procurement processes. There's some, um, statewide, um, uh, sourcing that we utilize to get the best prices, but we're even kind of getting more creative than that. So we've reached out to other large agencies, whether it's the state, to see if there are intergovernmental agreements to be able to get us some vehicles sooner. So just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. We're still working to fulfill three of the vehicles that the council had already approved, but there might be that additional need for another police cruiser, um, that became a, a newer need. The, uh, request for proposals for the grant writing services is out on the street. Kyle got that out and, uh, sent that to a lot of, uh, eligible firms. Those are, submittals are due the eighteenth. So it's a pretty quick turnaround, but we think that we, we are hopeful that we'll get a good response, um, based on our advertising as well as the direct outreach that Mr. Cornell's did. So, um, if we are able to, uh, review those submittals and come back, come to a recommendation, it would have to be a lay-down at the council's next meeting, which is on the twenty-third. It will depend on what we receive back and whether we feel there's some initial, uh, additional back and forth. But I'll work with you, Mayor, maybe, and, and let you know where we're at in that process to determine whether, whether you want to proceed in that way or, or wait until the following meeting. We did receive, uh, an application for, um, a special assessment district for the sewer extension up Whistle Hill. Uh, this is the, the project we've been discussing with the Kroll's to potentially extend city sewer up the hill along the, the Sterling Highway to serve those handful of properties. They've been meeting with staff to explore different options. They formally submitted an application to start that process of a special assessment district, which would be the city, um, potentially constructing the project if it gets sufficient signatures from the, the impacted landowners. Uh, where we're at in the process now is we've determined that the project is feasible according to the, uh, rules of the Soldatna Mistible Code, and we now have thirty days to develop a petition packet that includes information about the project, um, as well as some additional information required to be included, to give back to the Kroll's who are the sponsors. They would then go, uh, speak to the, uh, adjacent landowners to see if there's enough people willing to sign on to support, uh, that process moving forward. So we are, um, we've got a draft going, and we'll, we'll have that petition back to them within that thirty-day timeline. And then from there, the timing would depend on, on their outreach to their neighbors. Last item on my list, I, I shared, uh, a piece of correspondence I received last week from two local nonprofits. They had reached out and asked if there were any current, um, grant opportunities available through the city, either through COVID funds or ARPA funds or any other funding source. My assistant Laura did speak to one of the individuals and let them know that currently we don't have any open programs. We do, she did mention that the, the ARPA funds the city has received, the council has appropriated those, but not yet given direction. We have not yet, um, designated how those funds are potentially gonna be used. So I let them know that, um, currently, uh, we don't have any grants that we're offering from the city. Uh, this particular request is for, um, some folks, uh, looking to rent spaces at our sports center. I did have a follow-up conversation with Andrew, and as always, he's, uh, really willing to work with folks to see what he can do in terms of just, um, accommodating requests for the different events and, and trying to keep their expenses low. Uh, but I, the letter I received last week and, and wanted to share that with the council, it was addressed to the council as well as myself. So wanted to let you have, uh, an opportunity to read that and then follow up with me maybe after the meeting or, or this week if you have any additional, uh, questions or feedback on that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Ruffridge?
No, sir. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the city manager?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll move on to the next, uh, item on the agenda is item eleven, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber that would like to comment on anything? Seeing none, uh, looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised. So we will move on to council member comments, and we'll start over there in the corner with Ms. Hutchings.
Well, all I'd like to say is I sure hope snow quits soon. I'm ready for spring. That's all I've got.
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, no comments tonight, thank you.
Mr. Chilson?
No comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Uh, no comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Tonight at our meeting, uh, Dennis Murray's been here this whole time. At the very, very beginning of our meeting, under the considered agenda, we approved his appointment, uh, planning and zoning. And I just want to thank all the people who helped this city out by serving on boards and commissions. Part of what makes, um, our democracy work, our democratic republic, is that people come forward. They spend hours and hours of, uh, time that could otherwise be spent, uh, with their families or doing other interests, and instead, they do, uh, public service helping make our community better. So I appreciate very much Dennis that you're willing to serve. Uh, and I also know that there are many people who serve on the different other boards and commissions, and I just want to thank all of them, and, uh, um, this is an awesome community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. We'll move on. Well, actually, maybe we'll stop and do this. While Mr. Murray is here, we can, uh, do the oath of office. And the city clerk is all ready and raring to go. Thank you. All right. Agenda item number thirteen, executive session. We have no reason for one tonight. Item fourteen is meeting announcements. March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, airport commission meeting at five thirty PM. And on March twenty-third, city council meeting at six PM. Uh, seeing nothing else on our agenda or come before us, meetings adjourned.